Meetings called to order. So first off, I'm just going to start by reading the Indigenous solidarity statement. So we'd like to begin by acknowledging that Concordia University is located on unceded Indigenous lands. The Ganeyengehaga Nation is recognized as the custodians of the lands and waters on which we gather today. Joejagae, Montreal is historically known as a gathering place for many First Nations. Today, it is home to a diverse population of Indigenous and other peoples. We respect the continued connections with the past, present, and future in our ongoing relationships with Indigenous and other people within the Montreal community. So the roll call sheet should be going around. Make sure to sign in. And with that, we can get started on our meeting, the Record Collection and Retention Program. Sophie unfortunately cannot make it today. I guess actually before we do this, we can deal with excused. So I received requests for excusal from both Sophie and Michelle, who of course, since their executives are required to be at SCMs, and if they do not get excused, then they lose a certain portion of their salary.
Move to excuse the aforementioned persons.
All right, do we have a second? Rowan, any discussion?
I'm going to excuse Michaela also.
Oh, sorry. Did you... Okay, I didn't receive requests for excusal, so we'll deal with them after, because there's just two right now. So all those in favor of excusing Michelle and Sophie, please raise your placards. Eleven, all those opposed. Perfect. Okay, sorry, Camille?
Yes, I'm moved to excuse Michaela and Akira.
Okay. Do we have a second? Rowan, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of excusing Michaela and Akira, please raise your placards. Nine, all those opposed. Zero, perfect. Okay. All right, excused. That being said, we can move on to Records Collection and Retention Program. And John, floor is yours.
All right, great. So I'll leave this presentation in place of Sophie, who had allergic reactions today. This is a quick overview of the Records Collection and Retention Project we're going to be proposing to you folks. So it's... Basically, it is, we're going to be assigning a project to the archivist that already works as the CSU staff. So it's approving a project with a new position or a new funding commitment. It was supposed to be presented by Annie, but she couldn't make it tonight. So we'll talk about the council motion, five-minute presentation on the CSU RCRP, and then ask some questions, which I might be able to answer, because, as you know. So just a little bit of background. So as of June 2017, which is when our archivist began their job as staff at CSU, there wasn't any policy or procedures in place that would actually make sure that the archive departments would have their activities guided. So they were sort of there, they would make it up on the spot. There's nothing that says, "This is your job here, and this is what you're supposed to do." And hence, when there's no rules on what to be kept, how long to keep them, and what format to hold them in, it leads to a lot of institutional memory loss, it leads to a lot of documents that should be retained not being retained. And so when people try and look back at what the CSU did in the far future, those records that should exist won't be there, and it's not good for the union, or for the... Just for historical purposes. So the goal of this project is to actually abide by legal administrative requirements of a nonprofit organization, incorporated society, et cetera. Reduce the number of documents we actually lose, which is quite a bit. Do more to build institutional memory, which is really important in organizations like Student Union, where there's a very high turnover rate. Every year, the board of directors and executives is completely replaced. So institutional memory is really important in these types of organizations. And reduce the duplication of work. So every now and then, Student Union says, "I have a great idea for a project." If we forget that this was done two years ago, three years ago, and it didn't work so well, or we learned something from that, it can save people a lot of effort and a lot of money. And then the extra goal is actually promote the CSU. So in building our archives, seeing what's in our archives, we actually say, "Oh, this is a really cool little thing here." And we can use that as sort of like, "Hey, did you know?" And there's some folks right now that are trying to collaborate with us. They're trying to do a 50-year anniversary of the Ninth Floor Computer Riots, which is a really interesting piece of Concordia Student Union history. Just a point example. So we want to adapt the RCFP to CSU. So Concordia University itself has its own process for its records collection and retention. And so we're using that as sort of the model, and we're blending that into CSU. The benefit is that this will take a lot less time to do with the CSU than Concordia. The sheer number of documents is smaller, among a couple of other reasons. So again, a 50% shorter process than Concordia's process would be. A lot less demand on the archive list. So the way this project was developed was that individual meetings were held between January, March of this year. The past executive was working on it, council did actually discuss this and approve it. Those meetings with all the different heads of the departments in terms of sort of what documents they think they should be maintaining each year. And then when we were doing our transition for the executive this year, we each had a meeting with the archivist, and we talked about different things that we think should be there, things you'd like us to hold. So the next steps would be to formally apply the Archives Access Policy. This was passed by council in 2018 winter, so pretty recently. We've got to make sure that this policy actually gets implemented, it's not just going to collect dust on a shelf somewhere. At this point, we're trying to determine how email management and document naming guidelines might be applied, so making sure that all of the things we do are committee work in, and various projects, like floating on some Facebook groups here, and some Google document and drives here, and the OneDrive, and emails. Making sure that we have a consistent way of naming our files and storing them in a place that the archivist can actually find them. And the person implementing this process, the archivist, would have to write up the official policy on that. That's the way the whole thing is. Approving the project in terms of giving a job description that is necessarily under the archivist's job, under the collective agreement. It's not committing to any new funds, it's not committing to hiring anybody new. Because it's just sort of giving council's endorsement and approval for this specific project.
Are there any questions for John? Yes, Alex?
I was just curious whether or not, whether or not you know, do you have any idea how many documents we tend to lose or get misplaced for you?
I don't know, is the answer. There's a lot of unknown unknowns. At this point, we're trying to figure out the documents we have, what gets passed on from year to year. So like, we don't even know what we have been keeping, and what we've been losing. Like, I can just speak for myself, like, having to orient myself in the finance coordinator position. Especially where we had two finance coordinators in a period of a year, with each living their own methods and styles. Trying to assemble committee minutes, so I could figure out if it was a finance committee from last year. First finance person, Soleiman, used a Facebook group that reposted the minutes there. Camden, not so much. So the minutes were floating in different places, and I had to sort of stitch that together as a patchwork. These are the kind of things that the archivist has to make sense of.
Thank you. Rory?
Yeah, this is, part of the importance of this is, as John said, like, we had an example last year where the finance coordinator's email account was wiped when they left the position. So if you can imagine clubs, and anyone who's, you know, going for a check rec, who's emailing in receipts, or who's emailing anything about anything financial, all those records are gone as to what has been approved or what's been expensed. That was obviously an error, maybe not a mistake, but an error. And rules and regulations, you know, like this archives policy, helped to go right up in that one. So I think it is important that we have a nice system to keep things like that on record.
Is there any further questions? Yes.
Not a question, but just a comment. I really like the idea of getting interest in the CSU through our history. So like, I know that we're going to be getting a new communications coordinator full-time in September. If they can make, if we can make a note to suggest that they make posts on the page occasionally related to history, I think that'd be really cool. It's a great idea.
Thank you. Yes, Metha?
I also have a question. I wanted to know if these documents will be digitalized.
Yes, sorry, I'm on my way to the process. The ones that aren't already digitalized, a lot of it's... It's a lot of video, like council minutes, or council meetings and stuff, that might have been videotaped, and they're not yet digitized, I think. I haven't really seen any of them, like, a lot of... A lot of old video footage that might have been recorded for the CSU. For every hour of footage, it takes an hour to upload. So it's been a slow process, but archivist is working on things like that. It is to make it all digital and have a long lifespan.
Chris?
And just a quick question of interest, if you do know the answer. How long ago did we start filming council meetings?
I don't really answer that.
2014.
About four or five, four years ago.
We did not in 2013, but it started halfway through the year, I think.
Peter?
First question, though, how are you able to make sure, like, how many, how many lists of document, or how, like, how many lost documents in a new policy, if you guys are going to make a new policy bill? Like, are we able to make sure that keep track of how many documents we are going to lose? How many documents are going to be kept, and for how long?
Yeah, so with each position, with staff and elected office and committees and stuff, we'll have a list of things that we have to keep. And then anything that's currently in the collection, that is decided that we don't need to keep this, she'll at least make a record of the fact that she's getting rid of it. So yes. It is, every year we'd have a list of, "This must be kept."
Rory?
Read my mind before the placard went up. This is not necessarily, it may not be relevant to specifically this new archives initiative, but something I think would be useful for the CSU is to boil down our minutes from council meetings into an index of motions. This is something that I started with CASA a couple of years ago, because when you read through minutes, these documents can be 20, 30 pages long, with everyone's discussion in there. And sometimes when you want to find when X or Y was approved two years ago, you just want to be able to skim through five pages of motion that was passed or not passed, motion that was passed or not passed, motion that was passed or not passed. Nothing but recess, or, you know, call to order, and that type. But just like, the substantive motions that were passed at a meeting, and their topics, and maybe even who made them, is like an index that you can then go back to and say, "Oh, okay, June 2015 minutes. Let me read the discussion from that day, from that council meeting, so I can understand the context here." But what I really wanted to know was, when was this financial amount approved? So maybe this is, you know, maybe this isn't something that we can ask the archivist to do, but it should be considered.
Not only is it something we can ask, we've already started it.
Okay.
The idea is that we would have a minutes-taking template made available for the minuteskeeper in the future. But sort of bring a system where each motion has a sort of a code assigned to it. So it might be like, 2018, 11, '07, A1, approve the agenda.
Yeah.
So like, we're developing a system.
From 2013 to 2015, it's at the back of the minutes, because I did that. Camille?
Yeah, it's a form of information. Who's taking minutes right now?
John. We're not taking discussions, because there's no minutekeeper, so they're just taking the motions. That being said, is there anything else to add? Motion? Yes, Rory?
You said 2013 to 15?
Yes. Until the three years I was minutekeeper.
Oh, wait, you were minutekeeper, I'm not sure, okay. Okay, got you. Thanks.
Yeah, come on.
Here's the motion.
Go ahead.
So, "Whereas the CSU archivist has put together Records Classification and Retention Plan, hereafter the RCRP, by the Concordia Student Union, and whereas this project will ensure that the CSU records are kept, updated, and available to the public as legally required, be it therefore resolved, the council will approve the RCRP as presented by the CSU archivist." Slash, it's quite a carious lead to be.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Alex, is there any more discussion to be had on the motion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please raise your placards. Nine, all those opposed. Zero. Perfect. And Caleb abstain?
I'm all up to...
All right. And if there's no further discussion on the RCRP topic, we can move to daycare contingency increase. And Sean, I believe this one's yours. So you can start by reading the motion.
Just a second, somebody else take minutes while I'm...
Yeah, yeah, I'm taking those.
I can't really help, I can either reject them there. So this is a fairly large financial expenditure, so it's a motion to make expenditure out of our Silk Fund. So for a number of reasons, the daycare has had some cost overruns and new expenditures. There's three attached pieces to it, and all of these were unforeseen costs that we, I did not foresee when construction started. A lot of it, A, related to the fact that it's a very old building, and there's been some surprises. And some is part of related to changes in provincial regulations almost acceptable in daycare facilities. So part of that was around insurance, and that the insurance for the construction period that's not covered by regular insurance led to cost increases of $19,608. When we built the daycare, we believed that a residential kitchen was sufficient for daycare, because that was the law at the time. But during the construction period, the regulations changed such that we require it to have a commercial kitchen. So that's required some upgrading of the facilities that we have, can adhere to the code. Adding $28,000, $28,368 to the costs. And we also had to do some new roof insulation due to unforeseen inadequacies of the roof. So that's a lot less weight to the fact that it was just an old building, and the architects and construction people didn't properly foresee the costs, adding another $28,000 to it. So in total, we had about $76,037 to be proved to cover these costs. As we can finish the daycare, and hopefully get it opened on time, and, you know, have this exciting new project finally finished. We're not happy with the fact that we have to come back to council to prove more money, especially when it's this much. But if we don't approve it, we won't probably finish the daycare project.
Sorry to do this to you, but could you just read the motion?
Oh, yes, of course. So, "Whereas, on September 25, 2017, the CSU council representatives approved the full amount of $941,000 plus applicable taxes and fees, with a 15% contingency for the cost of the CSU daycare. Whereas unexpected and unforeseen major costs were incurred during the building and renovation project of the daycare due to hidden defect in a central building that needed correction. And whereas these unexpected costs are related to insurance for the construction period that is not covered by regular insurance, new commercial kitchen requirements from the Minister de la Famille, which that must be adhered to, and new roof insulation due to unforeseen inadequacies with the existing roof insulation, for a total additional cost of $76,037.31. And whereas no other major costs are expected for the end of the construction renovation schedule forecasted to end in mid-August 2018, be it resolved, that the council approves an additional $76,037.31 for construction costs to cover these unexpected construction issues to be incurred by the Students' Face, Accessible Education, and Legal Contingency Fund, pending fund committee approval."
Thank you. Do we have a second, Rory? Okay, I'll count the first part as your motivation. Speakers list, Rory?
Great. So I have a big issue with this at FinCom, not because I disagree with us, like, paying this now, but because I don't think that, like, especially the roof insulation, this is something that we've paid tens of thousands of dollars to the architects, to the engineers, to the contractors, to check ahead of time, when they provide us with a budget in advance, when they go through the inspection in advance, when they give us a budget and a construction plan, and they're the project managers for this, and say, you know, "Yes, we need this kitchen, and yes, we need this insulation, yes, your roof is fine, yes, it's, you know, no, it's not, we need more insulation." For them to come back now, at this point, after months and months and months of construction, and say, "Oh, yeah, by the way, I guess we didn't notice, but the roof needs more insulation," that to me is pure professional incompetence. And that's something that the CSU and the students should not have to foot the bill for. So while I'm fully in support of paying this because we have to, and because it won't get constructed otherwise, I just want everyone to keep in mind that we should be pursuing, or we should be at least investigating, you know, other negotiation sort of actions with our lawyers and with the, you know, companies involved, to go after them or their insurance for it. As a professional, like, as a professional architect, you have to have insurance for your profession. And if your personal opinion is wrong, or you've made a mistake, just like medical malpractice insurance, you can be sued for that. And I think if an architect or an engineer goes in there and says, "Yeah, your roof is fine, no problem", and later it's, you know, $30,000 of, "Oh, whoopsies, it ain't a whoopsies, it's a you did your job wrong." And they have insurance for that. So we should be investigating, and I think that we are, going after their insurance for it.
Thank you. Camille?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that, like, we're not, we're being careful into making accusations on the competency of, like, the people that are hired to do the project we're doing, those people are hired. And personally, I don't have any diploma in architecture, neither in, like, construction. So when professionals are telling me that are unexpected costs, my first thought is not necessarily, "We should sue them." So just, yeah, just being careful on that.
Caleb?
Two questions. The first question is, going with what Camille said, my question is, isn't the 15% contingency supposed to cover for unexpected costs?
It's not sufficient. Is my interpretation of this?
And my second question is, I guess, I remember from last year when I was minutekeeper, didn't, wasn't the university supposed to pay for half of it? What ended up happening to that? If you remember.
Oh, do you have a direct response?
The university provided the building. From what I remember, it was the university was providing the building, and we were doing construction.
Thank you. Rory?
Yeah, I just want to clarify again. I'm not saying that we need to jump to the suing, but we need to jump to investigate our legal options. And that's because when a professional tells me something, and it doesn't seem to make sense, regardless of whether I have an architectural degree or a engineering degree or not, I'm using my common sense to say, "This doesn't sound right." When a professional told me one thing before, and now there's a new group of executives, or a new group of people involved in it, and suddenly they're telling me something different, it's concerning. And when it raises questions like that, all I want to do is ask more questions. So that's why I want us to look into this. Obviously not jump to suing right away, but look into whether their insurance covers them for professional misguidance. The other thing to keep in mind, I'm not going to descend to stereotyping Quebec construction, but let's all, but let's all keep in mind that we were quoted one price, and now this is a $30,000 inflation of that price. If you walked into a car dealership and the same thing happened when you were about to drive off the lot, you wouldn't drive it off the lot. So just because this is students' money, and we have it in the Silk Fund, we should be pretending like this is out of our own paychecks. And like, "I'm sorry, but if someone comes to me and says, 'No, it's going to be, you know, 30% more,'" like, I'm not pulling out my wallet. You know, for me, like, that just doesn't feel right. You know, if you're a professional, you give a quote. If the quote goes over 10%, under 10%, great, no problem, we prepare for that. But we don't prepare for this. That's their job to prepare for it. So I just think we need to investigate this fully, to make sure that it is 100% unforeseen, and that it's no one's fault that it was unforeseen.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Do you want to be on the speakers list?
Yeah.
There's no one on the speakers list, so go ahead.
This is something that our general manager has been voting most of his time to. So yes, there is, when there is a thing to transition, companies often do try to take advantage of student union leaders, but we do have the benefit of having permanent staff. Robert, Robert had, in many ways, the project lead on this file. So we at least benefit from that, that there is some consistency in terms of dealing with the companies. He is investing into the best of his ability, and we are pursuing recourse options. I can't speak with those fully, Sophie's been dealing more on the daycare file than I have. But what I can say is that this has actually been a really informative process, learning experience. When we're trying to get the, because we started the WoodNote co-op. So we have a larger project coming down the road with even more money on the line. So like, our experience with the Quebec companies here is certainly informing the way we interact with that.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes, going back to what Camille was saying, like, my only concern with this is that if we pay this now, and then no one knows if there's a construction problem or stuff, and then later on, if there is, then, like, there's no one be able to, like, either look after it or after it, then we'll be able to pay more, so then, are you going to have a solution solving this if those problems happen? Because like, if no one be able to check, okay, this really did the right thing, and then it happened later on, saying, "Oh, this doesn't do the right way," and then it has all kinds of problems happen, then are we going to pay more than this?
It's possible, very unlikely, because of the stage of where the construction is at, at this point. Of the $76,000, only, there's three different pieces of that. Only one of them is through the actual construction process where they made wrong estimates of what's needed, and that was the roof. So that will get done. The other part was, again, there was a change in the regulations. So we were building correctly two regulations up until a certain point, but then the regulations changed midway through, adding new costs. And then the third piece was the insurance one. So where the construction schedule is right now, we're expected to be finished, completed, everything done, ready to open in September. So towards mid to the end of August is when the construction will be completed. It'll be difficult to find more new nasty surprises at that point, because the construction will be open, because it's really finished, daycare will be open at that point. So it's possible, but I would say it's not likely.
Thank you. Rowan? Or did you have your placard? Okay. In that case, there is no more speakers list, so if there's nothing else... Oh, sorry, Caleb.
Yeah, sorry. By any chance, do you know the reason why the, you just, the reason why the requirement changed mid-through? Because I found it really weird.
I don't know the reasons. Quebec building code was outdated.
Your next speaker's.
Yeah. Am I able to just, like, maybe this doesn't need to be a motion, but it can just be an action item for the executive? Can we make sure that there's an update given about this at the next regular council meeting?
Yeah, Chris?
Just a mandate, like, just like a mental note that it comes back on the agenda at some point as an information or a discussional point? Thank you.
Metha?
Formally, does that make us make a motion to postpone it to a certain next meeting?
No, because there's no, that would have been a motion to table, but it's just to get an update on, from what I understand.
It's just a mandate that there's an update given.
Camille?
If you were to postpone, like, it's supposed to be finished at, like, mid-August, so, like, yeah, it's kind of frustrating.
Needs to be paid now, yeah.
All right, so that there's no further speakers list? So all those in favor of the motion as read by John, please raise your placards.
Please note that two-thirds is required.
Eight, all those opposed. Oh, sorry, was that a yes? Okay, so nine, all those opposed. One, all right, so that carries. Abstain, Marley. Okay, and with that, if there's no further discussion on the daycare contingency increase, we can move on to orientation street closure, and John is the source. Just ask you to read the motion, please.
So Michelle, it's like you've...
Oh, sorry.
So, "Whereas the Concordia Student Union's orientation activities provide new and returning students with the opportunity to get involved in clubs, faculty associations, departmental associations, fee-levy groups, and other campus groups. Whereas past orientation activities hosted by the CSU have used the closure of McKay Street as a method to reach out to the greater Concordia community. Be it therefore resolved, the Concordia Student Union's board of directors approve the orientation team's plans to close down McKay Street between Sherbrook and Maison Neuf for orientation activities, including the Club Street Fair, the Community Street Fair. These events will be overseen by Michelle Sandiford, who will be the authorized representative of the CSU in dealing with the street closure and the city of Montreal." So there's a motion?
Oh, do we have a second? Rory, John, your motivation, if you want?
This is a routine mostly comes up every year at the CSU, to do orientation activities, to get the street closure approved for various orientation activities. The city requires a formal motion that gets passed to the organization's board of directors. In that case, that would be us. So, yeah, if we want to make the application to the city to get the street closure approved, we need to prove it here. That's really, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Right. Is there any discussion to be had on the motion? Okay, so if not, we can move to a vote. So all those in favor, please raise your placards. Ten, all those opposed. Zero, perfect. So that carries.
Bless it.
Is there anything else to be discussed on street closure, Rory?
Nope.
Okay. So that we can move on to finance committee minutes. Before we do that, sorry, I got about five to 10 people asking me where the consent agenda was. There's no consent agenda for an SCM, because you can't add motions to it. So in the standing regs, it spells out the consent agenda will be approved when the agenda's approved, but there's no approval of the agenda at an SCM. So if ever there's any reports that are pressing, they just come by as a point themselves. So basically, you just have to move to approve the minutes of the committee, and then they will be approved. So one extra step, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, both the finance committee minutes and the appointments committee minutes were something we did to check, because mostly because the finance committee has one motion around getting it advanced to Reggie's, in September. I just may want to get approved, just to make sure that's extra, extra approved by council, even though theoretically, FinCom's approval was sufficient. I just want to make sure that it's, if I saw it and T's crossed. So that's really about it.
I just need a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah. A motion to approve the finance committee minutes and appointment committee minutes as omnibus.
All right, do we have a second? Alex, do you want to say anything else on that?
We read the minutes, you see what's there.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Everyone understands that we're approving the finance minutes?
Any questions anymore? Okay, so if not, we can move on to a vote. So I guess instead of doing two points, we'll just combine them. So all those in favor of approving the finance and appointment committee minutes, please raise your placards. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, all those opposed. Zero. Abstain, Caleb. Abstain, Peter, and Rory. Perfect. So that carries. All right. And with that, I know there's no announcements, but I know that there's an announcement to be made. Like, see, in the future, we'll put announcements on the SCMs, just in case anyone needs to say anything.
Sorry about that. I'm going to read out a statement written by Princess, our internal coordinator. During the last CSU council meeting on June 13, 2018, two statements were made with regards to the behavior of CSU two statements were made with regards to the behavior of CSU counselors. Counselors have consistently displayed a blatant disregard. They have displayed this through repeatedly ignoring comments on gender parity, insensitive comments, failure to table certain appointments and motions to give absent counselors a voice, and failure to appoint gender parity to the majority of standing committees. As a result, Internal Affairs Coordinator Princess Shumkhun announced that she will be boycotting council. Prior to the Internal Affairs Coordinator's announcement of the boycott, Akira de Carlos, the Sustainability Coordinator, made this statement regarding council's actions. In the CSU Positions Book, lastly updated November 31st, 2017, Article 12.1, the CSU recognized that intersectional identities create different marginalized experiences and that different women and gender non-conforming people experience different barriers based upon class, ability, race, gender expression, religion, ethnicity, et cetera. That the CSU respects perspectives and value the representation of women and gender non-conforming folks who are Black, Indigenous, people of color. 12.3, that the CSU add power and visibility to the voices of women and gender non-conforming folks who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color. 12.4, that the CSU encourage an intersectional feminist approach towards all future endeavors. 12.5, the CSU recognizes the importance of listening and recognizing all identities and different barriers that each face. 12.6, the priority be given to someone who has lived experience at the intersection of different systems of oppression in roles that demand it. I would like to believe that such endeavors include making sure committees, such as Finance Committee and Policy Committee, represent said intersectional feminist approach adopted in our Positions Book. However, as this is the third council meeting, comes to a close, now with the fourth, there has yet to be a proper gender parity and attention dedicated to the lack of women, and more importantly, the lack of women and people of color on councils and committees. Such demands are, the counselors who occupy a position of privilege, whether because of their gender, race, sexual orientation, ability, et cetera, cede more space to those of marginalized identities, specifically women, non-binary people, and other trans people, people of color, and LGBTQ individuals. That people have, that have the least committee involvement be privileged. That gender parity be respected in every committee to the extent of counselor capacity. After these statements were made, Appointments Committee was approached by a BIPOC femme counselor who wanted to sit on that committee. Appointments Committee notably lacks gender parity, as well as lacking any BIPOC individuals. None of the masculine counselors on Appointments Committee have stepped down to make space for the BIPOC person, including two of them who are not only white masculine folks, but occupy three seats on three, occupy a total of three committee seats. They have yet to make space for gender parity and for the BIPOC femme who is interested in sitting on this committee. This is completely unacceptable to occupy that much space, and when confronted by it, refuse to acknowledge that space is not only in poor taste, it is willfully refusing to acknowledge one's privilege and is taking away opportunities directly from the feminine BIPOC individual who could have benefited from the space they're actively occupying. Not to mention that it is directly in contradiction to the Positions Book, which is mandated by student vote. Appointments Committee is not the only committee facing this issue. In fact, every single committee except for Finance Committee and Loyola Committee has failed to meet gender parity. Of the 41 occupied seats that are open to CSU counselors, 27 of them are held by masculine presenting individuals. Only 10 of those seats are occupied by masculine people of color. The Concordia Student Union represents 36,000 undergraduate students who come from diverse backgrounds, and as such, there must be diverse equitable representation on all CSU committees. As the union has positions on equity, diversity, gender parity, we must rectify these injustices. These are injustices. We have failed as a union to provide adequate representation to the student body, and this is further depriving marginalized folks of the space and voice they deserve. CSU executive team wholeheartedly supports the actions and statements made by both the Internal Affairs and Sustainability coordinators. We believe that we should all equally strive for a society that promotes inclusion, diversity on all levels, including institutionally. After all, it is institutions like the CSU, where BIPOC, LGBTQ, and other marginalized folks have been silenced and not given any space at all. We are dedicated to ensuring that these voices are heard. The first step to making sure that all voices are given space and that all voices are heard of the CSU council will be implementing and enforcing Standing Regulation 73 from the CSU Standing Regulations states. Between persons who spoke the same amount of times on a said topic, the chair shall use gender parity when granting the floor. Counselors will also be offered diversity training modules as part of their council training in August. CSU executives are also working on other methods of promoting diversity and inclusion to be announced in September. Should council continuously fail to make space for marginalized voices on committees and in council meetings, the CSU executives will be escalating their tactics. We hope that counselors engage with these statements and take actions now. Moving forward, we hope these statements and trainings will provide educational means to lead to a more progressive and inclusive CSU. And just, Princess wants you all to know that while she's boycotting actual council meetings, she's not boycotting counselors. And if you want to reach out to her with questions about this or about anything related to her job, she's obviously available.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion or announcements? Yes, Rory?
I have a couple of things to say. First, I think I should add it as an agenda point, just for future. And I think as chair, it would be your job to make sure that a point like that is added to the agenda explicitly, not just an announcement, because it was more substantive than just an announcement. So that's a comment on that. Second thing, very separate from the former. I also chair, I chair ASFA's council. And we had our first council meeting last month. And I made a somewhat similar statement as an introduction to the new counselors, saying that I would be, you know, attempting as chair to enforce basically what Princess is saying in her statement there about our bylaw, you know, 73 or 76. That the chair will use their discretion to grant speaking privilege first and foremost to, you know, non-male or, you know, to aim for gender parity or diversity parity. And I made that statement as an introduction to all the new counselors, that that's how I was going to be chairing that meeting. And I was doing so, you know, with what I would like to think of were the best intentions. And I had someone come to me at the break, and they sort of pulled me aside and said, you know, while I really respect the intention to do that, they said, it's actually the wrong way for you to go about it. Because as chair, what you'd be doing is you would be making the decision, you would be assuming whether someone is gendered or whether they are a, you know, part of a marginalized community, and it's not your place to do so. It is the individual's place to feel free or feel not free to disclose, not to disclose, to identify, not to identify. And that I, as chair, regardless of whether I'm, you know, a white male or not, it's not my place to decide or to pass judgment on whether someone is or identifies as a marginalized individual. So I just think that we all need to keep this in mind when we're talking about people speaking in this room as council or people speaking on committees, that, and this is something that CSU actually acknowledged last year with the BIPOC appointments, and said, you know, I remember at Policy Committee, we went over it and said, look, you can't be too specific. You can't have too many rules in the appointments policy because you have to allow for people to self-identify. If they self-identify as being, you know, Black, Indigenous, or a person of color, maybe they don't look it, maybe they don't tell you that that's how they identify. But if they apply to that committee, that's their self-declaration, that they identify as part of that group. And it's not for anyone else to say, are you or are you not? So I just think we all need to keep that in mind. This isn't, this isn't any sort of a defense or an offense to what Princess has said. This is just a side commentary that we should all keep in mind. It's not our places to pass judgment on how other people identify. There are people in this room that can identify as things that we wouldn't assume they are. And I think we just need to have that open mind, that open mindset. That's just my comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kami?
Yeah, although I agree with what Rory said about policing people identities, it does not take away from the fact that, like, positions of power here at the CSU are extremely non-diverse. Like, it's happening, like, it's, there's, people are not comfortable coming here for some reason, like, people of color, people from marginalized communities. And I think it should, we should think about this. We should wonder why this is happening, and like, what can we do about it? Because right now, like, there's nothing happening. I'm sorry, but like, we're just all sitting there, listening to a statement, and I don't know, are we going to do something? That's all.
Thank you. Alex?
I would like to agree with what Rory said, and once again, state my big concern that we really must be careful that we don't force someone to out themselves publicly. Although I do have sympathies with what's being said, I do strongly encourage everyone to be careful about assuming things about people. Not everyone's necessarily open about who they are or what they are. And for that reason, we should make sure to always keep this in mind when we do in fact make such comments as this. So we should, we should try our hardest to not assume these things until we're sure of it. I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing anyone of this. I'm not saying we've done anything wrong inherently. I'm just saying for the future, I strongly support we keep this in mind as a precaution, and we account for it. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, as someone who's put a lot of time and effort into doing LGBT activism, trying to make my community more welcomed in society, definitely sympathize with the fact that we want to make sure that trans people and people that don't visibly, sorry, people that don't identify with a gender that the world might put up, assume that they have. But just to make sure that, well, we're trying to create a safe space where trans people closeted or not. We're not just going to use that as an excuse to not pay attention to gender equity in our committees, and not have a lens towards gender power dynamics in an organization. That's, just be careful with that.
Thank you. Rory?
Yeah, I also just wanted to speak in favor of the diversity training that I guess Princess had included in that statement. I think that would be a really good opportunity for counselors to learn about power dynamics, power imbalances, and be able to, you know, self-identify when they might be coming from a position of privilege. And then strategies for how to, you know, identify and step back, or identify when that's causing a barrier for other people, and when to sort of be able to identify that and step back or, you know, communicate that with others. And for, you know, people who identify as from a marginalized or a power imbalance community to be able to, you know, find ways to communicate that as well. So I definitely want to speak in favor of these diversity workshops, I guess, that are going to be held. And just ask maybe if they can be held twice a year, because we'll get new counselors in after the by-elections, so it would be useful to hold it, you know, just like the sensitivity training that we do.
Thank you. Kami?
Yeah, I'd like to remind people that training are as good as how people want to act on it, and if people are willing to act on it. Right now, we have someone, which is a Black woman, that are saying that right now, our committees are not diverse and our committees are not inclusive to marginalized people. So let's just keep that in mind before thinking about training.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements or comments? Yes, Sam?
This is a difficult situation because you can't force people to run, and you can't force people to be explicit about how they identify because people do have issues with it. But at the same time, I agree with our internal coordinator that, yes, there is a lack of diversity. Perhaps this could be taken up as an amendment to a bylaw, perhaps, that we can only move appointments to attend when we have full attendance of people. This way, A, we avoid an entangled situation where people are coming in, then have a space, or requesting a space to get into a committee, and yet it's already full, and it has not yet occurred to people that they want to take part in that situation. I'd like to know if this is possible, if this would be a good idea. More like, also, that would fall in line with how council would be structured, as well as the committees. How they will also be structured to pay attention to diversity and inclusion.
Rory?
I really agree with what Sam is saying. The only problem with that is that it's very rare that we have a full council. I think a good way to make that, to make that happen is to say, you know, if we're at, say, 80% of counselors in attendance, then we can only fill 80% of seats on something. If only half of counselors are in attendance, we can only fill half of seats on something. That would be a good, like, prorated way to do it. The other thing I want to say is, it's just like Kami has mentioned, you know, just like her point about training is only as good as the individual's actions behind it. Appointing people, whether a council is full or whether a council is empty and people still jump to a seat, like, that strategy is only as good as the individual deciding to run or not run or step back, right? Would we need to do that? Would we need to take that, that sort of step of restricting the number of seats we appoint if people weren't just willing to step back? Maybe not. So it's like, instead of looking at changing the system, let's first try and fix, say, individual barriers that might be easier to solve than to impose new rules. Not that I disagree with them, I think we could do something like that, but if you see what I'm trying to say here.
Thank you. Caleb?
With the, I think, I think the way I see it is that I feel, it's like, maybe some counselors don't want to be, don't want to be tokenized just by saying, oh, we have this person on the committee, so we fill that requirement. So we just have to make sure we avoid that. One, and the second thing is, going with what Rory just said, I think we're all for diversity, let's, rather than mutually agree on that. The issue here is, why are people not, what's the drawback? What's the barrier? What's the wall that is making them say, you know, I don't want to apply because of so-and-so reason, so-and-so that? So if we can tackle those, if we can tackle those small issues first, then everything else is, everything else is splendid and wonderful. That's my trick.
Thank you. Rory?
Kind of running off that. I don't think the only issue was like, people didn't want to apply, but also that there was kind of like, people who jumped to fill space. And those people were predominantly, as the letter goes on, people who present as male, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's also something that needs to be factored in. It's not just, and like, Caleb's absolutely right, like, we don't want to tokenize people, and that's something we do have to be careful of. But at the same time, I think it's important for like, say, cis-white dudes such as myself to at least provide space for people to step into that role if they so choose. And I think that that's something that hasn't been done this year.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Yes, Rory?
Yeah, it's just like how we address each other with "they", because it's not our place to assume someone else is gendered. And we enforce that, I mean, Caitlin as chair enforces that. I think it, just like Caleb has said, we need to, we need to avoid tokenizing people, but at the same time, each individually keep a very open mind about what power, power imbalances exist. And I think that's where training is useful, because it'll help people to, it'll teach people that may not have been exposed to that, that they need to keep it in mind, and that they need to be able to identify when and where it's happening.
Thank you. Alex?
Just a quick peek around, drop what Rory's mentioned. Although I do agree, I strongly support the use of "they" as the default. I still have high concerns in the past of, if someone makes it clear what their pronoun is, to then still use "they", especially if, say, that person were to be trans, non-binary, gender non-conforming, it kind of is a slap in the face to assert an extent. We really, I'm like, not now, but we really should consider adapting that policy if someone has openly stated what their preferred pronoun is.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion to be had? Yes, Rory?
Can we bring this back to next council discussion as well?
Yep. I can make a note to-
Just because it's a small, special council right now, so I think it's equally important to hear this once again next time, and to have it be brought, like, mandated to be brought back as well, for those who aren't in the room, et cetera.
Okay, is there anything further? Yes, to adjourn? Yep, accepted. Oh, sorry, did we get a second? One. Accepted. Thank you very much. Did you want to say something?
There's a little tool in there called armentalkingtommuch.com. And so you can use this in meetings, and there's two buttons. One says dude, and one that says not a dude. And you just press it, and it'll start timing. So the conversation we had about that announcement that was made, 80% of the conversation was done by men.
How do you know they were men?
I assumed.
You're certain.
I did.
So let's acknowledge that.
There's no, the meeting's adjourned.